Good evening, everyone. It's 7:01 PM. I'm calling this regular meeting of the Village Board to order at 7:01. This meeting has been given public notice in accordance with Section 1980, 19.83 and 19.84 Wisconsin statutes in such form that will apprise the general public and news media of such a matter that is attended for consideration and action. Rule call showing that all trustees are present and accounted for. Julie, trustee Peiper, is absent, excused, and trustee Baum will be coming in shortly. Please stand for the pledge allegiance and a moment of silence. And before we do the moment of silence, I just want to say that we had a rough week this past week. So I'm going to be saying a little prayer to our community and to those impacted by the historical rain and flooding, and prayers to the family that lost their loved one.
Pledge allegiance.
Do I have to say something better?
Do you recall what promotes a sound? What makes you under the gun? Do you guys want a little bit of justice for us?
Thank you. President's Report. Good evening, everyone. I would like to share what has been going on since my last President's Report update of two weeks ago. This past week has certainly been a challenging one for our community. The historic rainfall and subsequent flood, flooding impacted our community for several days, and it still does today. Lots of folks continue to be impacted. Saying that, I could not be prouder of the response and recovery efforts by all. From our wastewater staff being deployed at 1:00 in the morning on Sunday to mitigate the impact that the flooding had on our lift stations and on our community, to police and fire responding to many emergencies, our entire DBW staff supported the efforts on multiple roads as multiple roads were impacted, as it was all hands on deck when the flooding impacted County Line Road and the lift station there. Our fire emergency first responders self evacuated many individuals from the Rivers Ben neighborhood with temporary shelter opened at the Performing Arts Center at the high school for those individuals. Unfortunately, we did have one loss of life in the Rivers Ben community due to a suspected carbon monoxide poisoning. Far too many homes have been impacted by the rain and flooding. Several businesses were closed for many days due to the flooding. After the state of emergency was declared on Sunday afternoon, we ramped up the emergency operations center where the village administrator and his leadership team met several times over the duration of the event to effectively manage the response and recovery efforts. I was very pleased with the village's extremely transparent communications to our residents via the village's website and social media platforms. Our community came together and supported our neighbors. I want to thank our federal, state, county, and local elected officials for reaching out to me with support. Thank you to Senator Tammy Baldwin, State Senator Jody Havish-Sinkin, State Representative Dan Conodel, and Washington County Executive Josh Shulman for the many conversations. Thank you to the Germantown School Board President Russ Ewerth for supporting our community by opening the PAC for temporary shelter. I would also like to thank our neighbor to the south of us, Jeremy Walz, the Menominee Falls Village President, for our conversations as well. Thank you to the many businesses that donated food to our first responders and that had fundraising events. We are a very caring and resilient community, and I could not be prouder. As one community resident stated, "The sun will shine, so we will soon get back to regular life again." We will learn more tonight about the village's response and recovery efforts were. Outside of the rain and flooding event, it continues to be a very busy time in our community. At Fireman's Park this past week, the annual Neighbors Against Crime Night Out, or NAC, took place. Activities included a Flight for Life helicopter demonstration, along with drone, canine, and taser demonstrations. Fun was had by all. Musical band, The Britons, or The Brightons, entertained the crowd as they played at the Music in the Pavilion event. On October 9th, I participated in presenting a village and county proclamation to Germantown High School grad and current UConn student-athlete KK Arnold. KK was having a basketball camp at the Germantown High School Fieldhouse and was being recognized to celebrate her basketball career. While at Germantown, KK won a state high school basketball championship. And this past year, while at UConn, KK won the NCAA Women's National Basketball Championship. KK truly is a remarkable and wonderful person, and she gave us this nice little plaque for what we did for her. And speaking of another remarkable person, our very own Germantown Police School Resource Officer Tony Olson was recognized by, was recognized for being named Wisconsin's 2025 Drug Abuse Resistance Education or DARE Officer of the Year. Officer Olson has dedicated 11 years to teaching DARE program in our schools and 14 years as a school resource officer. Finally, this Thursday at Fireman's Park, the latest, the last music at the Pavilion event will occur when music entertainer Babella Kane takes the stage from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Many food vendors will be there to ensure that your bellies are full, and of course, your favorite beverages will be served as well. So come out and celebrate Germantown. Wrapping up, it's been a very busy and challenging couple of weeks since we last met. I'm looking forward to our meeting this evening as we work together to move Germantown forward. Thank you. And we are now on to announcements of forthcoming events of Public Interest Committee and Department reports. Trustee Kaminsky.
Public Works will meet in this room on Wednesday, September 3rd at 5:30 PM.
Trustee Rick Miller. Have to look up the date.
Fifteen.
General Government and Finance will meet in this room on September 15th, Monday, September 15th. Thank you. Trustee by cuts.
Public Safety will meet in this room on Tuesday, September 2nd at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Would any other chairs of any committees or commissions like to... Trustee Jan Miller.
Um, the Economic Development Committee will meet here in this room on September 9th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Moving on to, oh, Mr. Kriklo.
If I could, just one announcement. Haven't had a chance yet to introduce our new Support Services Manager to the full board. She was at the GGF meeting, but not, not for the full board. Gosha Wormsbaucher is our, our new Support Services Manager. So just wanted to let you all get to place a face with the name and welcome her to the village.
Welcome. All right, moving on to citizen input. Would anybody like to speak tonight? Please come forward. You have four minutes. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you.
Bush.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Doug Lowman, W180 and 9881, Rivers Ben Circle West. And I, and I want, I want, I want to thank you for all of your efforts and the resources that you marshaled, as well as Police Department, the Fire Department, and everything for helping our community out. I, I'm, Slinger's Fire Department was down there helping out, you know? I, I know that takes tough stuff. I mean, people don't want to get rid of their resources. And they somehow or another, you all got them down to help out, too. And we really, the whole community really appreciates it. And, you know, as most of you know, I spent a career in the United States Navy. And in the Navy, we would, every time somebody did a good job, we would say, "Bravo Zulu." In 24 years, I never found out what Bravo Zulu meant. But I want to say to all of you, Bravo Zulu. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming tonight. Would anybody else like to speak tonight? Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Barb Berg. My address is N90 W20509, Hillview Drive in Menominee Falls. I have a few comments on the Sutton Ridge Farm and the recent flooding situation. I attended the Village Board meeting on Monday, July 28th, and viewed the August 4th meeting via YouTube. Here's what I learned. From the discussion regarding the definitions of the various types of housing units on July 28th, I was understanding that the Village Board was leaning toward having multifamily housing, and particularly, the rentals located inner near Village Center. The reason for this seemed to allow flexibility with the population of nearby elementary schools. The possibility exists that any unsold units in the multifamily condos planned for Sutton Farm would be rented. The use of the Grossnick Farm, I'm sorry, the use of the Grossnick property was brought up on August 4th. As you know, this property is surrounded by multifamily housing, restaurants, and shops in downtown Germantown. There were different scenarios as to the use of the property, including storage, storage units in a park area. My involvement started with hoping to convince this body to reduce the density of the Sutton Farm development in order to avoid traffic congestion issues on Highway Q and Landon Road. My conclusion to the above information is this. Eliminate the multifamily possible rental structures from the Sutton Farm development and put them on the Grossnick property closer to Village Center. This would reduce the density of Sutton Farm, reducing the anticipated increase in traffic volume. Storage, storage units seem to be a better fit near Sutton Farm, closer to the utility plant and the commercial industrial development areas. Contrary to trustee Kaminsky's comments, at the July 28th meeting on the Saxony Village Development, where the residents opposed the construction of taller apartment buildings, thereby losing out on amenities like a park area, municipal parking lot, and a storm basin, it was stated that immediate neighbors are always going to oppose new development. But the Village Board should maintain control and do what's best for the village. The comment continued in reference to the development on Highway Q. The residents are opposed to that development. Again, it was stated that the Village Board should keep control and do what's best for the village. The members of the Village Board were elected to represent the opinions of the residents. On August 9th and 10th, and again on the 12th, Germantown and Menominee Falls were hit with a record amount of rainfall. Flooding occurred north of Highway Q. On Landon Road, the right-hand traffic lane was closed. Further east on Highway Q, near the Grace Commons retention pond, the right-hand traffic lane was closed. Continuing on east on Highway, Highway Q, the road east of Fleet Farm was closed from Monday, October 11th through Friday, August 15th, and Rivers Ben Circle subdivision was flooded. From the Washington County Daily News, August 13th, 2025 edition, according to the Germantown Fire Chief John Delane, quote, "The headwaters to the Menominee River are in the northeast section of Germantown. So all of the runoff that happens from all the fields and properties and roads ultimately end up in the Menominee River. So as the northern land's drain, it enters the river, which causes the river to swell until it comes to a point of congestion, which would be a bridge, which is right here on County Line Road, that caused the river to further overrun its banks, which caused the flooding," end quote. Imagine the Sutton Farm development would have been, imagine how the Sutton Farm development would have compounded flooding issues in this area if it wasn't placed. How is increased flooding in the village, in the village's best interest? I believe that it's the Village Board's responsibility to carry out a comprehensive study of water flow and drainage in the area. It would be totally irresponsible to continue the Sutton Farm development at its current density size. We need to retain existing natural drainage areas like the farmland on the northeast corner of Highway Q and Landon Road. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming tonight. Would anybody else like to speak tonight? Would anybody on WebEx like to speak tonight? I do believe we had... Okay, but we did have someone mail something tonight.
We do have some.
Yeah.
Uh, we have two comments that were mailed in. The first one says, "Hello, we would like to say a big thank you to the Village Police Department, Fire Department, and Village employees who helped all the residents survive the storms and the flooding. Also, big thank you to all the other communities who came to help out our village in a time of need. Prayers to the family who lost their loved one and loved one who is in the hospital. Prayers to the residents who were hit by the flooding and the loss of damage, the loss and damage they are experiencing. The sun will shine, so we will all get back to a regular life again. The Schneiders." The second that we received by email, "Hello, with all recent flooding, I would like to address the issues of housing developments, impermeable surfaces, water runoff, and retention ponds, particularly with respect to the proposed Sutton Farm on County Line and Landon Roads. This picture is from the house at N96 W20912, County Line Road. It is their front yard flooded from their house to the street. They had to park their car right at the street to keep it dry. The field that surrounds We Energies also flooded into the entrance to Walmart from County Line Road. This picture was taken four days after the flooding, as I was not in town during the flooding. This field abuts the proposed Sutton Farm development. Also, Landon Road, north of County Line Road flooded. Here is the leftover barricade from it. It flooded again for a short time Monday morning during the heavy rains. While this may have been historic flooding, having these types of flooding events every 20 or so years is not so historic and is problematic. Adding a 273-unit development with all the additional impervial surfaces will contribute to the flooding in the area. I realize that there will be retention ponds built with this development and other developments. But both retention ponds on County Line Road at Grace Commons and Breezy Hill Nursery in Menominee Falls overflowed the banks, pouring water onto County Line Road. This is a picture of Grace Commons still reaching over the bank on Wednesday, four days after the storm, and still encroaching on the street. This development will reduce 80-plus acres of agricultural land that absorb rainwater, and the above pictures show the retention ponds were not enough to hold the rainwater. Last, still in regards to flooding, but not necessarily about developments, is a drainage ditch in front of my house and the one to the south of my driveway. All the road water and debris from the road drains into these. This picture shows that it is filling with sand and rock and garbage and is not backing up the flow of water, not allowing it, not allowing it to move towards the woods. The drainage area south of this one is buried in the ground, not allowing for any water to drain, which is why I believe Landon Road flooded the other day. These need to be addressed, cleaned out, to keep the water moving towards the creeks. Excuse me. Development needs to be thoroughly examined before being approved. I know the village engineer had many written concerns with the Sutton Homes development, many of which dealt with sewer, the lift station, and the lack of dimensions of the retention ponds. Myself and surrounding neighbors have been concerned about this prior, but now foresee the devastating consequences this development can have on us, our wells, and our homes. We cannot let flooding be the new normal and must take all possible steps to stop it. Thank you, Tammy Schneider, W204 N9699, Landon Road."
Thank you. And final call. Anybody else like to speak tonight, either in this room or on WebEx? Okay, moving on to item seven, Consent Agenda. Now, do we take these separately or all at once? Okay, I understand a motion.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Discussion. Trustee Jan Miller.
Um, I'd like to pull item B for clarification, please.
You'd like to do what?
Pull item B as a boy.
Okay, so we're just voting on item A and B.
C.
No, A and B. Oh, you want to pull B?
I want to pull B. B as a boy.
Okay, we're voting on A and C.
Yes.
Further discussion. Pardon, trustee Kaminsky?
Rule call. Cash for the squad.
Yes, yes, rule call.
Just going to get a rule call.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
Trustee Cuts.
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Borst.
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky. Do we have trustee Peiper online? Please, President Soderbergh.
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. We're now on to item B, an ordinance to amend section 15.08 of the Germantown Municipal Code related to clear waters discharge. Matthew, Matt, welcome.
I'd be happy to answer any questions, or I could give an overview of what the suggested.
Yeah, overview would be great. Thank you.
So, the code, as it exists right now, 15.08 regarding clear water discharge, which is essentially your sump pump discharging water out somewhere for drainage. The way it's currently written, there's like three problems that we wanted to address with this code change. The first is that it doesn't allow for discharge to the front of a property. The other issue is that it doesn't allow for discharge to a roadside ditch. So when you combine not allowing discharge to the front of a property and to a roadside ditch, you're probably making, and this is just an estimate kind of off the top of my head, but you're probably making about 70% of sump pump discharges in the village noncompliant with the code, which I think in general is a problem. The code should try to match the community, and I think there's a way it can be written. And the way it's proposed is that it allows for these changes, that you can, with this code change, discharge to the front of a property, and you can discharge to a roadside ditch, and it specifies certain conditions under which you can do so. And then finally, the code change also addresses issues with enforcement. There have been a handful of circumstances where it's been difficult to deal with issues resulting from clear water discharge. In particular, how the word nuisance was defined in the code and then used had a very strict definition and wasn't kind of the general definition of nuisance like you would expect. So the way the code addressed that is to keep the definition of nuisance, which is essentially discharging your clear water into a storm sewer. So that is the only way it's defined in the code, in the code as it exists now and in the revision. The problem with the original version of the code is that it then used that word nuisance later in a way that was probably intended to be the common definition of the word nuisance and not the specific one that was defined at the beginning of that section. So what we did is we kept the definition of nuisance as discharging clear water to a sanitary sewer, which is something we clearly want to prevent, and then just eliminated its use later in the code, so it can keep that definition. Then I would say, in addition to the enforcement issues that we're dealing with, we're also in the process of doing a large reconstruct on Wagon Trail. And that's a road that had some fairly non-standard configurations for sump pump discharge, some of them going directly into the gutter, which causes a number of safety concerns. We didn't, we don't want to allow them to put it back like that because of those safety concerns. So I think in order to tell them a proper way to put the sump pump discharge back, we have to modify the code to give them a code-compliant opportunity without substantial modifications to their system.
And, thank you. So what item would the wagon trail subdivision kind of road, what would they be under? What would the change be?
Well, they could discharge to the front, so they're all aligned to the front of the property. So just that alone, right now, we technically would have to tell them that they need to reroute their sump pump to the back of the property, which probably doesn't make sense, and most of the homes are designed with the, you know, the ejection pipe coming out the front of the building, so that could be a substantial change. There's not a roadside ditch there, so that's not an issue. The other issue at Wagon Trail, like I said, is that in a lot of cases, the clear water is getting ejected right into the roadway, so right at the gutter. And, you know, a couple of problems with that. The biggest one is in the winter, when that discharge continues to happen in a lot of these places because of high groundwater, and we get icing on the road, which is an unsafe condition. And then in the summer, it can actually get kind of mossy and slippery, too. So that's also something that we want to try to prevent. So the change in the code would also require that they either connect to a storm sewer lateral, which doesn't exist on Wagon Trail, or over the ground, like on a hose, through a hose, but stop 10 feet short of the property line. So it dissipates before it would like fall into the street.
Okay. So it's the 10-foot rule, and basically. So if there is, I have two questions. Does it also include any discharge from a clear water? It doesn't, I don't think it specifically says, please correct me if I'm wrong, artisinal wells? It's clear water.
It does, that term is in here.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I mean, that's a type of clear water.
Okay.
And this section is broadly addressing clear waters. The modification to 15.08 makes it very similar to the rules in 15, I believe it's 1509, one section later, that deals with like storm water.
Okay. I wanted to make sure that was included. I have no further questions.
Trustee Bob Warren.
So Wagon Trail is really the catalyst for this amendment, because we saw the damage of the curb and gutter, because if you have a saturated base course constantly, it loses its strength to support the curb. So you start to have premature failure. So it's that issue, and it's also the safety issue. It was very slippery. Freeze thaw with constantly having water, there is an issue. My biggest concern, after being out there today, I already see one sump pump falling on the curb and gutter already. So what is the enforcement of this? What is the bite to the bark?
I would have to look into the bigger section of the code here. Let me see if it's in what I attached. There's a penalty section here. Any person determined to be in violation of any provision of this section shall be, they'll receive a written notice, given a reasonable time to correct, and then compliance can continue, and I believe include other penalties as defined in section 25.04. Not entirely familiar with what that section is, but it's probably, you know, different binds and such. We've generally had pretty good success, especially in the highway department, with all the notification letter going out, giving them a certain amount of time, and then the resident making the correction without too much difficulty. Now, I know there is just an email submitted by a resident today that, you know, was less than pleased with the route this was headed. But I think for the reasons that you identified, trustee Warren, and the reasons we talked about concerning safety, I think it's really important for the long-term benefit of that road and other roads in the future, and then for safety, to get this corrected.
I think the extra step you'll have to take with a lot of property owners is that you talk about 10 feet from the property line, and they typically don't know where that property line is slash right-of-way line.
Yes.
So if we follow that criteria, I mean, a lot of people will probably think that that's from the back of curb.
They will.
And 10 feet from the back of curb still, in my opinion, is not enough distance for that water to dissipate before it starts doing damage.
Yeah, so we would work with them to identify the line, you know, that delineates right-of-way from private property, and then 10 feet back from that line.
Yeah. Thank you.
Further discussion. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. To approve item B, an ordinance to amend section 15.08 of the Germantown Municipal Code related to clear waters discharge.
Second.
Second, Bob Warren, trustee Warren. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Yes, sir.
You want to? Sure, how can we help you, sir?
My name is Harry Tate.
Sir, can you go speak into the microphone, please?
But do you mind? Keep it brief, because we have to run a meeting, okay?
My name is Harry Tate.
But we're allowing an exception.
W 165 North 10445, Wagon Trail, Germantown. I have a letter. Follow me what I want to say. Please.
Thank you.
That's okay, that's fine.
The road fork on Wagon Trail in Germantown. It would have been a good solution putting the PVC pipe underneath the concrete that was cut off from the driveway. The sump pumps could have been connected to a PVC pipe, and the water from all the sump pumps could flow into the drainage grate so that no water would run on the cement and give some slippery problems next to the road and unnecessary during the wintertime. When the water freezes, it would not break up the concrete and the pavement. Even the rain gutters from the houses could be diverted into the PVC pipe. I recommend it to the city workers often when they were working on the road. The worker don't, I told them, go and tell us in the city hall, that's my idea. So, and I made a little sketch, you can see it, how that would work. Is that a good idea? It would be a sheep idea. I saw when they put the gravel in, after a couple of weeks, they took the gravel out, put new gravel in, put screen over. I think that's all should solve the water problem somehow. But I think the solution would be the best idea, put a nice pipe in there so all the sump pumps would be connected, and even the clear water from the downspout.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. We will give this over to our public works director for consideration. Do appreciate your coming forward.
So, I don't know, is that too late or too early?
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Yes, sir.
If I am interested, I can give him a copy from it.
Great, thank you very much. Moving on to item 10, new business. Resolution ratifying a proclamation declaring a state of emergency in response to a natural disaster resulting from historic rainfall.
Sure. So as those of you who are here during COVID probably recall, and those of you who are new, basically, the chief executive officer has the ability to declare a state of emergency in certain circumstances by statute. That was done last weekend by President Soderbergh. What the statute does provide, however, is that that declaration needs to be ratified as soon as possible by the governing body, which is why it is here before you this evening. That's typically done in the form of resolution, which is what is presented.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion. Wrong way. I'll move approval of agenda item A.
Second.
We have discussion. All I can say is when you get a phone call early Sunday morning from your village administrator, only bad things happen, and that occurred. And I'm very pleased that we were the first community in our area to declare a state of emergency, and hats off for your engagement. So all those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Moving on to item B, presentation on natural disaster resulting from historic rainfall and village response. Minister Craclo.
All right, thank you. We have quite a bit of information to present this evening. We have the department heads from the key actors within the flood response here, and they prepared information that we'll go through with the village board and for the benefit of the public. But the first thing we're starting out with is about a four-and-a-half-minute video that was prepared by Brenton Shrimp, our Parks and Recreation Communications Person, who is also one of our technology gurus, and was able to pull a whole bunch of video from a variety of different sources, and I think gives a bit of an understanding of the scope and the scale of the flood that we were dealing with. All right, and once again, thank you, Brenton, for pulling that together, and thank you for everyone who contributed video clips to that. And we'll be posting that on the village website for residents to be able to access as well. The next item, we do have a... There's quite a bit of information in here. I hope you'll find it all helpful and useful, but a PowerPoint presentation that goes through in some detail all of the events of the last week, really, from Sunday through about Thursday. So, and I'm just going to start out with a little bit of background. Does that work here? All right. And then Chief Merton will be presenting next. But as you're all aware, we received multiple rounds of heavy rain from the evening of Saturday, August 9th, through the morning of Sunday, August 10th. Officially, it was about 10 and a half inches of rain, but did hear multiple reports from residents who have rain gauges at their homes of sometimes in excess of 15 inches during that time period. And then on Monday morning, just when we needed it least, we got another round of storms that passed through with an additional two inches of rain and creating the types of conditions that you saw in the video. We're going to have the departments walk through their presentations. We'll start out first with the Police Department, and Chief Martin will be presenting about their activities and actions during this time period. Chief, do you want to... One of the podiums of the microphone, please?
The Police Department was... It's on. Police Department was notified early Sunday morning of the heavy rains. I was notified about 5:00 AM. At that point, our DPW department had already been out assisting with their lift stations and water. Between August 10th and August 13th, we took 92 calls for service, just weather-related. Out of that, we had a total of 237 calls, but 92 of them were weather-related. Majority of the calls were flooding. People were calling. Their basements were flooding. The pumps weren't working. Vehicles stalled in traffic. Our major concerns at that point were making sure that the residents were safe in the village. Rescuing drivers that decided to drive through the water that they didn't know that was deep, and their vehicle stalled. Debris in the roadway. There was one resident that called. She was on her way to the hospital. She was in labor. At that point, officers got there. Fire department was busy on other calls. They arranged for ambulance to meet them at a rendezvous point. However, there must have been some miscommunication. The other rescue squad never showed up from another jurisdiction, so our officer took them directly to the hospital. August 10th, we were dealing with cars stuck in the roadway. False alarms from the rain from all the businesses. Traffic signals went out on County Line. Standing water on 41 County Line underneath the bridge there from all the debris. Old railroad ties from the railroad tracks were flooded onto the roadway. Many calls of basements being flooded, manhole covers getting popped off because of the amount of water in the storm sewers. August 11th, County Line Road flooded. 41 in Maple, high water. The right lane was closed on 41. Rescue... Then we had a rescue call. Did you heard about somebody just started a generator to help citizen out? And one of the residents passed away due to carbon monoxide. A male drove into the ditch on Lilac and Maple. You saw the picture on the video, the white vehicle. We got the call. The water was up to the windshield. Officer responded. He ran up there. He went back, and he jumped into the water up to his neck to try to save this individual, which we did. We got him out of the car. Their vehicle was removed like two days later. On the 12th, the river's been flooding. The major concern here was that the rising waters and also the power outage that occurred on County Line Road. The sun pumps in these individuals' basements was probably shut off. It was already high water on Rivers Bend West. We coordinated with the fire department to go in and do a courtesy check of all the residents, and if they wanted to self-evac, they could. We got a rendezvous point of the high school. The school district was more than willing to open up their doors to let the citizens in there. Some issues we had. Kids playing in the floodwaters. We tried to warn the citizens, make sure they're not doing this. The golf course had people kayaking, taking kayaks onto the golf course and going into the river. A big thank you to all the businesses in Germantown. Some more than others. They donated food, whatever they needed, equipment. If you asked for it, they dealt, gave it to us. Meals they supplied to all the departments. I guess the biggest thank you goes out to the DPW, because, I mean, we were there just to assist them. We were helping them run errands, get stuff that they needed. But if it wasn't for them and their manpower, a lot more basements would have been flooded. That's all I got. Any questions?
Tracy Warren.
So, Chief, I'm going to ask this of everybody here. Any lessons learned from this? Like, how did communication work between fire, police, DPW?
It was okay. I think we should have probably activated Emergency Operations Center sooner. As soon as we knew of the high waters on Monday, or Sunday, I should say. We probably should have opened it up right then, had people from every department in the same room communicating, or a representative from that location. I know we were all... It was every person, every hand on, all hands on deck. Everybody was out there helping. So, that would have been my only thing. It was just to open Emergency Operations Center sooner on Sunday and get everybody communicating. I mean, we were talking back and forth, but we knew what was going on for the most part, but just to get everybody in a room together and say what the needs were.
Now that Washington County is handling our... What's the term? Dispatch.
Communications.
How did that work?
I think it worked fine. They were dispatching us to the calls. The officers were getting there. All the calls went to the Sheriff's Department, whether they're 911 or landlines. So, we were getting dispatched to the calls. It was just such an abundance of them. Somewhere, we tried to prioritize the best we could for them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Tracy Warren, I believe we launched the Emergency Operations Center on Monday, and we had several meetings subsequent to that. But we will be doing a Lessons Learned debrief, an after-action report on this. Now's not the time. We just want to do a report out to the community on, from a recovery and response standpoint, but we will be doing a Lessons Learned, so. Thank you, Chief. Your team did a wonderful job, so.
Okay. So, at 4:45 on Sunday morning, Italian Chief Riker Holmes notified me that the fire department at that point in time had seven calls going on at the same time, and that he was activating our MABUS disaster card, which is the first time that card has ever been pulled since we started the MABUS program in 2005 somewhere in that area. During the course of the beginning of this incident, after Riker had notified me, between 2:00 AM and 4:00 AM, the fire department had nine runs in that short time period, and those are documented runs. Those aren't runs that we had to come across as we were deploying out to some of these circumstances. From the best information I'm getting, and Riker, maybe you could help me, but talking to the rest of the guys, seems that really we had about 15 or so in that timeframe. From 2:00 AM on the 10th until 6:00 PM on the 13th, we had 45 runs. During that same period, a year prior, we had 27. So, it was a significant increase in our call volume. As of 2:00 PM on the 13th, we had operated with 36.25 regular man-hours and 36 hours of overtime. For the Rivers Bend incident, we had over 80 first responders there, 14 different agencies, 36 evac... Excuse me, 30 evacuations and 36 people sheltered in place. Those evacuations did include some people who did self-evacuate that could and people that we did pull out. Six of those peoples were pulled to an emergency shelter or sent to emergency shelter. We had one firefighter injury. One resident from that operation that was sent to the hospital. And of course, the fatality that has been talked about, and there was another injury due to the same CO2 incident. Resources that the fire department utilized and the neighboring agencies. We had six boats, one UTV, 19 different pieces of fire apparatus, and the Washington County Sheriff's Office Command Unit. For the pumping operation on County Line Road, our fire truck, our engine pumped 64.7 hours. 61 of those hours was straight pumping at about 1,500 gallons per minute for a total of about 5.8 million gallons. Talking about the fire truck, the only real injury that fire truck sustained was we did end up blowing the radiator in it. So, that's very good news. Thank you to the Milwaukee Firebells, Panda Express, Starbucks in Germantown and West Bend Distillery. Walmart donated 20 gallons of bleach to the fire department. Fleet Farm ended up donating a boat to us. We used to have a boat. It was sold prior to me being the chief, and I went in there to get a price for a boat, and they said, "Pick out what you'd like." Brahmas donated food. Old Germantown donated food, and Blackstone Creek. Any questions?
I'll just say, I was there during that entire event, and you guys are phenomenal. And just a short story. We were staging all the apparatus at the Cracker Barrel, and I knocked on the locked door. Everything, all the power was out. It was dark inside. I knocked on the door because I saw a couple of people in there, and the store manager comes out opening the door. I said, "Hey, do you mind if we borrow your front porch?" And she said, "No problem." I don't think she expected to have 80 people there. All the trucks that were there, two drone operators, command post from the Washington County Sheriff's Department, multiple agencies from state to local to DNR. But it was quite an experience, and you know what to do, and you did it. You executed very, very well. And being at the drop-off point where the boats were coming and the ambulances were there, never had so many hugs from people. It was truly a very wonderful event, seeing the happy faces on people that your team assisted. So, hats off. Great job.
Thanks. I would like, and I did not put it on my slideshow, just to point out, and I know some of you got to witness it, on how well all of our different departments operate together and work well together. And the true hero of this event is the wastewater department with their operations to try and save everybody's basement and infrastructure of the village.
Hats off. Thank you.
Scott Anderson, the Highways Parks Billings and Ground Superintendent, asked it. I just walked through his slides. He is here tonight to answer any questions that you might have. So, for the Highways Department, storm response started on Saturday, August 10th, actually. I think even earlier with several trees down that the highway staff had to address. Later that night during the heavy rain, there was a traffic signal knocked down on County Line Road, and they responded to that, getting temporary traffic control up. At 3:00 AM on Sunday morning, Scott was contacted by Tim Zimmerman, the sewer superintendent, seeking some help with the lift station on Main Street. 16 of the 20 members of the Highways Department responded for assignment that night. Somewhere around 3:30, Anderson received a call from Captain McCullogh of the Police Department, that the basement of the Police Department had approximately two inches of water in. That was a priority. So, staff responded to that to stop the water flow and begin the cleanup process. They also went to check the basements of all other facilities. Four members of the Highway Department supported the sewer utility throughout the day, while the remaining 12 members went to address area flooding, gravel washouts, clearing storm inlets to help with the drainage process, working to remove water from the basement of the Police Department. At around noon on Sunday, the highway staff were... Most of the highway staff were relieved and went home. As the floodwaters continued to rise, threatening the lift station on County Line Road, four staff members returned to help build a dam across the lift station driveway. This was, if you could tell from the photographs, I think, one of the more creative and amazing things that our staff did when they saw the water rising. They actually built a dam out of compost, sandbags, and hay bales that really saved that lift station from overflowing, from being flooded, which would have caused, you know, an unknown but very numerous basement backups throughout the village. One staff member worked throughout the night on Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, helping to support the sewer utility staff by monitoring pumps at the lift stations. On Monday, we were able to get two people out to reconstruct the traffic light on County Line Road. Other staff members were assigned to highway shoulder and road repair or park cleanup. In our parks, you may have seen yourselves or seen from photographs, a lot of the mulch had washed out into various areas of the park. And this all took just about two weeks after all the playgrounds had mulch added, at a cost of $5,000, so that work all had to be redone. Tuesday morning, it started with another round of heavy rain. It's created more street flooding and increased level to the sanitary lift station. Half of the team responded to the sewer utility in one fashion or another, either helping out at the other lift stations or down at County Line Road. The remaining staff, including the seasonal folks we had, working on clearing storm inlets around the village to help with the drainage issues. On Wednesday, the staff were assigned to flood projects in some fashion. They were moving barricades around from streets where the flooding had subsided to streets where new flooding had started, and then working on shoulder repair, road repair, or park cleanup. On Thursday morning, I'm sorry, that was when the small crew got the County Line traffic light back in place, and afterwards, everybody else was on other flood response tasks. On Friday, four staff came in early to sweep the Maple Road and open the closure as the water had receded so that it was available for people going to work on Friday morning. Then they met up with Washington County staff to go through the same process on County Line Road and get that road open before rush hour on Friday morning. And many of the staff were, continue to work on shoulder, road repair, and park cleanup, and they're doing that today as well. Although, the other thing that all this rain is doing is causing the grass to grow, and they're trying to catch up with some mowing and get that work done. One of the other major efforts that's going on now is work on coordinating debris collection with waste management. As you may recall from one of the updates that I sent out, Waste Management did indicate that they're going to be providing some free debris collection to the village. to the village in areas that are, where they provide garbage collection. But I do want to just to manage expectations on that. They're doing that basically as they have crews and equipment available, and they are doing this for other communities like Menominee Falls as well. So they will not be able to cover the entire village. There's going to be a significant village staff effort required as well. There's also still a lot of shoulder and road repair work and park cleanup efforts going on. And pointing out that even with all that additional work, there's still going to be music at the park this week, and highways buildings, highways parks, buildings and ground staff will be setting that up and taking it down so that, as one of our comments said, the sun comes out and we can get back to normal life. I wanted to talk a little bit more, we wanted to talk a little bit more about debris collection, starting this week, and give Scott a lot of credit for putting together a plan, and again, getting creative on how we could approach this most efficiently. We have a garbage packer on loan from West Dallas, along with a village skid loader, and that will be going through the village to pick up storm damage debris again this week, and continuing on. Waste Management, as I mentioned, will also be out there. Crews will be picking up items listed for bulky item collection on the village website. So some of the key things that residents have been asking, this does not, will not be picking up brush, will not be picking up appliances or electronics. And we are asking and emphasizing with residents to please just put out storm damage items. You know, we have noticed as we've been going around the village, kind of doing a survey of what's out there, there are some things that have been set out that don't appear to be storm damaged. And I don't think our crews are going to leave things behind necessarily, but if residents are putting out things that aren't storm damaged, it means that it's just going to take longer for us to get to the people who really did have the wet carpeting and the wet furniture and the things that should be picked up as soon as possible. Some of the folks that we pointed out to thank here, Roberts facilitated a lunch for the DPW staff. Johnson and Sons of Menominee Falls donated four loads of sand to fill sandbags for the County Line Lift Station. And, you know, here, I think, again, this has been typical of the responses that when someone was asked to help, they stepped in without hesitation at a critical time, and that was a huge help. And then, as was mentioned before, the stillery donated staff, a meal to all DPW staff and delivered it to County Line on Wednesday afternoon. Also, and this shows you, I think, some of the spirit of cooperation here at Village Hall, and I have to admit, I didn't even know this until I read the slide, but our village clerk, Donna Ott, one day bought pizza and delivered it for the entire DPW staff Thursday afternoon. So, thank you, Donna. Proview Outdoor Services participated in a time and equipment to help prune some trees around the lift station, carried sandbags, cleared floating trees from the bridge on the Menominee River, Menominee River at County Line Road, and Brahmas donated dinner to the department and sewer utility on Wednesday evening. We got a lot of help from Washington County in a variety of efforts throughout the response. The highway department supported the village as needed throughout the event, delivering sandbags at a critical time down on County Line. They brought down extra pumps to help with the County Line situation, and then coordinated the cleanup at County Line on Friday morning. Fond du Lac actually provided a six-inch backup pump, and while it turned out not to be needed, it was, it just showed that, you know, people from as far away as Fond du Lac were responding and helping out, and it was good to have that backup in case one of the pumps went out. So, and with that, I'll let Scott answer any questions that you guys might have.
Again, Scott, great job to you and your team. You know, a lot of smiling faces when I was visiting with them, and they were doing a wonderful job. So, a lot of heavy lift. I do have a question. The washout of the road on, was it Rockfield and west of Goldendale? What's the long-term solution or plan for that?
Well, that's a great question, Bob. I think that is, that would fall in the category of undecided at the moment. We're just getting going on planning what we're going to do with that. So, yeah, more to come on Rockfield Road. The good news there is we're not impacting any residents, so that's a real positive. Happy to take any other questions. I would like to just make a comment. Worked for the village for twenty-five years and been in this industry for thirty. This certainly rises to the level of definitely in the top tier of things that I've seen go wrong, both in Germantown or other community that I worked in. But I do have to say, I want to talk about like my team just for a minute, just absolutely proud and amazed of the work that they did. You know, I look back at the crowd here, police and fire, wastewater, water utility. You know, Chief Delane said it earlier, I mean, when something goes wrong here, we really do coordinate behind the scenes and work together. So I couldn't be any more proud. Village Hall, the work that was going on behind the scenes there as well with gathering the information and putting it into format that we could use out in the field. There was just a lot of really great things happening around the village. But my team especially, I'm just super proud of them, super proud of them. To be able to call on a Sunday morning at three o'clock in the morning and get sixteen out of twenty people out of your department, we have no real, they feel the devotion to the village, and they feel they understand what their job is, but they're not tied to an on-call, they're not being paid to respond for an on-call. They just showed up and did the right thing. That makes me very proud, and I just want to kind of, you know, let everybody know that. So, any other questions for me while I'm up here? Thank you, everybody.
Donna?
Yeah. I couldn't agree more, Scott. And we, again, you've heard me say this many times, that the clerk's office is somewhat the community hub. We became the call center, and I tell you that the number of folks that have called in, just grateful and thankful to everyone for your DPW staff all around, for our safety, police and fire personnel. So, taking these calls, Casey and myself and Maddie and Sharon and a few other folks in the village hall who stepped in, we are receiving that across the board. So kudos, I'm proud to be a part of the Germantown team, and those pizzas were from, you know, from my, from my staff as well, thanking you for all that you do. It's so minimal, but we wanted to say we appreciate all of you guys. So, all of the calls, again, in almost four hundred of them, most people just happy for all of you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the sewer utility, and as Tim is coming up, I just want to make a comment that I want to make sure that people kind of understand the nature of the threat or the issue that we were dealing with on County Line Road. I was with the city of Milwaukee back in ninety-seven and ninety-eight, when there were severe floods that hit Milwaukee County. And when a lift station gets flooded, what it basically does is it reverses the flow of the sewers. And how much, how far that goes and how far that might have gone in Germantown, I don't think we know, and I'm grateful that we don't know, but it would have caused extensive damage to many homes in the village. And, you know, as this issue was kind of getting out there, I don't think that most people understood that, but I think Tim and his team did, and it shows in the dedication that they stepped up to make sure that that did not happen.
I'm going to bore you to death with a twenty-minute video, because I hate public speaking. Actually, if you look, is this laser working? Oh, it disappears. Anyways, that is a drone shot that I included that I don't think anybody else has ever seen. Looking back to the north from County Line Road over our operation on County Line, you can see the magnitude of the water and the amount of water that is just sitting right there, waiting to destroy that lift station. Brenton, can you start the video? This is raw video from Chopper 12 on Tuesday afternoon about one o'clock in the afternoon. We had already hit crest of the Menominee River by So this, like I said, this is raw video from Chopper 12, WISN provided me with this The first ten minutes is going to focus on Germantown, not only our operations here on County Line Road, but it's going to circle around to the Rivers Bend neighborhood, and eventually it's going to work its way all the way out to Commerce Circle and Maple Road by quick trip. And it's, they're going to fly that corridor before moving into the Menominee Falls. As you watch this video, I just want you to keep in mind the enormous
Tim, explain the rationale for pumping the water on the county line and shooting the water over to the other side of County Line.
So the majority of the water that was affecting the lift station was coming around up there on the upper right, coming down the drive-through, if you've ever been to the Buffalo Wild Wings and the Starbucks over there. There's a drive-through lane right there. You can see it pretty good on the south side of Buffalo Wild Wings. That's where the majority of the water was coming, and it was making a ninety-degree turn onto our driveway, which is, in Scott's presentation, he mentioned that they burned that off using compost and wood chips, because believe it or not, it was the only dry material available to the village at that time, and we took it from the yardway site at the new DPW where we built the overhangs to keep the material dry for the residents. Well, needless to say, there wasn't any compost or mulch on Tuesday and Thursday of last week, because we used it to make a dike, if you will. So the water was coming around the backside there and then flowing back out to Rivers Bend Drive. And we were monitoring the current in the water to make sure that it wasn't circling back around on us, that we were pumping it twice. So as we noticed that the waters were changing their movement, we adjusted our operation also. We moved pumps, we extended hoses. We always wanted to make sure that the water we were pushing was continuing to flow to the south and to the east. And we went over to Taco Bell and Burger King, and we saw that there were two natural outlets out of each one of their dry, out of their parking lots that free flowed directly back into the Menominee River, and that's why we directed our efforts to force that water through those two parking lots.
Could you maybe just talk a little bit about, everybody sees it as a small building for the lift station, maybe just describe what's underneath that?
Okay, so there's a little small building, that's basically the control building of the lift station. That's where we have our pump controls and our standby generator. And at one point on Tuesday morning, shortly after eight o'clock, we had six inches of fresh rainwater in that building, threatening to take out our control cabinets. The drywell is where the pumps are. That never was affected. And then our wet well obviously never got surcharged because it was sealed, and we kept it closed the entire duration. This video, now we're going into Rivers Bend, some of these pictures we saw on the police flyover with their drone. The critical nature was preventing water from hitting the electrical cabinets. I lived through a loss of a generator back in ninety-seven, the same lift station flooded. It took out the armature in the generator, and we had no power at that lift station at the time, so it shorted out. The event in nineteen ninety-seven led us to build the original berm that surrounds that lift station. At the time, the Holiday Inn Express was being built, and we basically stole fill from that site to create that berm in the middle of a rainstorm. That was not quite as significant as the one we experienced last week, but So here you can see the staging for the police and fire incident in Rivers Bend where they did the evacuation. The apparatus is just starting to arrive from the all-call that Keep in mind by this time that we had reached crest. We had reached crest at ten fifty-seven AM on Tuesday morning at County Line Road. That's River Bend Circle West right there.
Tim, have you ever seen it this bad?
No, I've been working for the village for thirty-one years, and I've lived in the area my entire life, and I have never, never seen water like this.
And I think I commented that this is a hundred-year flood, and you said, "No."
No, this is, this is a physical flood. MMSD is already calling it a thousand-year storm event. The rain rates we were seeing, you know, were ten, twelve inches per hour. The little rain event we got on Tuesday morning that threatened to wipe out our makeshift berm made out of compost and wood chips, we actually saw the highest rain rate per hour I have ever seen in my life, which was twenty-two point five inches per hour. And that little rain event, believe it or not, dumped one point three inches of rain in forty-five minutes. So I got some graphs that'll show that later on here. Yeah, it's just a ton of water, and all that water had to go somewhere. And unfortunately, lift six is the low point on County Line Road. Going to start drifting over to Menominee Falls here pretty soon. Yeah, you get a little dizzy watching it. I apologize for that. I didn't do the video, but I'm very happy they let us have this, because like I said, this is all raw, unedited. So here you're looking at Menominee Falls, a little shopping center that was just on the left that would have been really nice and Best Buy is. These are the roads directly behind those, that shopping center, Rivers Bend Shopping Center. So there's Nice in the center there. So there's Nice in the center there. Penny Mustard would be on the left. Penny Mustard got flooded quite severely. Lot of loss of merchandise. That would be County Line Dental there. This is Division Road. Flying over Indian Hills right now. We all saw the video coming out of Texas a few weeks ago and this just kind of brings it home, the kind of devastation that Mother Nature could throw in a very short period of time.
At this time, did the falls open up their dam or their dams already open?
The dam was already open at this point. We made the phone calls to get the dam opened on Monday night, late. Chief Delane and I were talking about that and we made the phone call and he graciously opened it initially six inches and then an hour later they opened it an additional foot. Again, that's the Penny Mustard store there on the west side of that complex.
While the video is playing, if I could add one other piece of information about the response as you watch the fire truck that's out there and how critical that was in the whole response to this issue. We did have an issue that after about a day of pumping, an oil pressure warning light came on on the fire truck. It was taken over to the new DPW facility where because we have a shop that can handle fire engines, they were able to diagnose it, that it was a problem with the warning light only, that it was a malfunction of a warning light. And we were able to get the fire truck back out there and operating. And without that fire truck, I don't know if we would have had the same results. So another one, sometimes when people talk about the cost of something like the Public Works facility, you know, that's, this is one of the benefits of having that, that we were able to do that and get that truck turned around and back out in service.
I just echo some of the operations that were going on behind the scenes at the new DPW. We were able to secure 800 sandbags from Lincoln Contractor Supply. Our local sales rep actually drove to Oshkosh, picked up 500 of them and dropped them off late Monday afternoon. Tuesday morning, first thing, we had a load of sand on a truck in DPW. We had a crew of five guys loading sandbags, filling sandbags, putting them on pallets. And as soon as they had a pallet full, they were bringing them out to us down on County Line so we could continue sandbagging. And it was just a flawless effort on everybody's part. I mean, from the guys making the sandbags, the guy setting the sandbags to one of our highway department crew who has a farm in McQuon who went and got us straw bales out of his straw mouth so that we could raise the level of the perimeter of the berm. It was just, it was just crazy how everybody just, you know, everybody answered the call and, you know, just gave a hundred percent all the way through till the end of this thing.
I was with Chief Delane in one of his fire vehicles and we're driving by Buffalo Wild Wings. We're talking to the store manager and she was inquiring, where can I get sandbags? And right when she said that, here comes a couple of DPW guys carrying some sandbags over to her. So not only did we support our infrastructure, we supported the retailers right behind us. So it was great.
We kind of babysat their businesses for about four days. You know, we kept them, there was always people there during the day. So we were communicating with them. What was happening with our initiative, what was happening with the county's initiatives as far as getting County Line Road back open. And, you know, it was, I think it was good dialogue to have with those businesses. Later on, as the event transpired into more of a, you know, a mop up, you know, decisions were made between Steve and I, you know, to continue the pumping operations, not only to de-water Rivers Bend so those residents could finally get back into their homes, but we continued to pump an additional six hours after Rivers Bend was dry to relieve, you know, the magnitude of water that were in the parking lots of Buffalo Wild Wings and Starbucks was just, it was crazy. There was one point I drove through it and I had water to the bottom of the door on my work truck. And it was, where do you go with that much water? I mean, you know, you're a coffee shop and you're a chicken wing guy, you know, and it just was absolutely insane that, you know, and you still had people showing up in the morning trying to get in there to get their coffee. I don't know how they were finding their way through road closed and whatever, and you know, and they're flipping us off and telling us to get out of the way and banging on the speaker of the drive through. And I'm like, dude, they're closed, you know? They just, they just didn't quite get it. But that's human nature. I guess you become a creature of habit and once your habit is not available, you kind of freak out. But it was, you know, you saw some of the best of human and some of the worst of humans. For me, it's probably the, it's the worst event I've experienced working for the village. I've experienced suicides in the lift stations. I've, I've seen another truck smash into a lift station and almost kill the guy. And living through the first two floods of my career back in 97 and 98, and this one definitely is a cake. Absolutely. And I hope to never see it again.
May I speak?
You may.
Tim, I've always admired you and respected you, but you are truly a hero in my eyes. You really are what you did for this village, what you did for the businesses, for the residents. If it wasn't for you, I don't even know how many residents would have sewage backing up into their basements. I hold you on a pedestal and I do think you belong there and there's no words other than thank you.
Well, I appreciate those kind words, but I can come up with the greatest of plans, but it takes a team willing to execute those plans to make it all come together. And like I said earlier, my guys answered the bell every single time I called them. I ran them on short hours of sleep. You're going to see just the magnitude of hours we spent here at the village. You know, we're a four man department. With me, it makes five. And it's one thing when we have a snow event, everybody can run a snowplow truck and get the roads cleared, but not everybody can, you know, operate a lift station and know when to bring extra pumps on and so on and so forth. And that's why my staff is so critical to this community because they are actual experts in what they do. They're professional operators and I just can't, you know, say enough about them that they, you know, everyone without fail showed up day in and day out and they worked the 24 hour shift. You know, I had guys here, the longest one that was here was here for 27 hours straight, Sunday and Monday. You know, sometimes public works, people get a bad rap or whatever, but this is truly when our, we shine is when, you know, to quote West Bend Mutual, you know, your worst brings out our best, you know, because this is what we do. This is what we get paid to do. I get paid to move a lot of water and that's what we did. Anyways, back to the video. This is Maple Road, Liloakley and the famous white car that was there for four days. We all wondered if the person made it out or if they learned how to swim after going in there. Commerce Circle, the freeway was flooded, all three lanes at one point. Yeah, it was just an incredible amount of water. This is kind of cool. If you look there on the freeway, the county actually built a barrier out of sand to keep the river back so they could keep two lanes of traffic open. This was after the waters had receded a little bit because at one point, like I said, the entire freeway was closed for a period of time and it just was total chaos with traffic trying to get off on County Line Road. We actually had to redirect the detour that we had set up to push people further east on a pilgrim and clear that corridor. We shut the off ramp down for a period of time just to keep traffic off of County Line. And shady lane, it was, and Rivers Bend was just nuts. It's getting about the end of the video here. I think I've watched it like six times. Every time I watch it, it just blows me away the volume of water that was there.
Tim, I know we had a lot of cooperation from Washington County and other agencies, but were you communicating with our Menominee Falls folks during?
Yeah, I was, I was communicating with my counterpart in the Falls quite a bit, not only on what they had for damage. And if anything we could assist them with, but they were also offering as they brought stuff offline from their own disaster cleanup that, you know, they ended up bringing out pumps and hose that we could have as a standby. Village of Jackson offered personnel because they didn't get hit quite as bad as we did down here. And at the time, we were pretty well staffed. But yeah, it's just, everybody pulls together, you know, in the county, in the state, really the greater southeast Wisconsin region. When you have an event like this, I mean, we saw it when the tornado hit Hartford on Father's Day, you know? Hartford was calling, do you have people? Can you send trucks? Yeah, it is, it is what it is. We're a, we're a special type of worker, you know, we come when it's the worst. So we'll get into some details now that at the beginning. Yeah, okay, so these are, these are hydrographs that I can create in the weather station that we have at Department of Public Works. So the storm event began at 4:30 p.m. in Germantown. And if you look at those spikes on the left-hand side, as I'm looking at TV, there's the rain rate and I believe that rain rate up there is at 8.3 inches per hour. So you can see that first initial thunderstorm we had back around 4:30. Not that I was here, I was actually at State Fair under the grandstand trying to get into a Leonard Skinner concert that was subsequently canceled. And then I had to try to get out of State Fair after the infield of the track flooded. So needless to say, ton of rain on that first rain event, we kind of dried out there for about an hour and a half. And then things started getting a little crazy about 10 o'clock at night. You can see that, that, you know, the real blippy up and downs. When I calculated that out, we were sitting at about a rain rate of 4.1 inches per hour for about a three hour period of time. And that is just massive amounts of water. Moving on, the initial measurement of rain I took at 6:15 in the morning on Sunday morning and we were at 8.82 inches of rain and the rain event ended at 2:30 p.m. with an additional 1.96 inches of rain falling between 6:15 in the morning and 2:30 p.m. So the timeline of my response is I was abruptly woken out of bed by our SCADA dialer. We're high wet well level and backup control active at Old Farm Lift. Now there's a little backstory to this whole SCADA thing. We put in a brand new SCADA system at the new DPW. It was at end of life. Put in a brand new system over there. The main computer crashed on Saturday. They had to physically bring back our old system, get it up and running. And when they did that, they screwed up the on-call rotation follower. So my guy that was on call the week before was actually getting phone calls and he had gotten called in earlier when the first storm event started about 4:30, subsequently turned off his phone for the remainder of the night because he wasn't on call anymore. So fortunately, I got that call. I was in here 10 minutes after I got that call, actually 13 minutes. And I was able to take corrective action by bringing on a third pump at Old Farm Lift Station. And I was able to actually call in my actual on-call guy. It took him 40 minutes to drive from his house to get in here. It was raining that hard at that time of the morning. 2:30 in the morning, I was contacted for high levels at, it's actually supposed to be Main Street. My operator on call showed up. He arrived at Main Street. I informed him what was happening. It was at that time that he informed me that Donjust Bay Road was flooded completely over with tons of debris, including railroad ties that were just floating in the floodwater and people were driving through there hitting them and it was unbelievable. So I kind of briefed him on what was happening. He stayed at Main Street Lift. I went back to Old Farm Lift and then I began getting people called back in. Going back to the shop between 2:40 and 3 o'clock. We had flooded water at the Noraxway Crossing. That's where the east channel of the Menominee River, it's called the Noraxway Crossing, crosses underneath County Line Road basically at 145 and County Line Road. That was flooded over, Wasaki Road was flooded over at the low point before, or just north of Donjust Bay Road. And then of course, we had flooded over at Donjust Bay by the shop. I got ahold of Scott Anderson because I knew I needed equipment and I didn't have enough people to break away to go get that equipment that I needed. I knew I was facing a sanitary sewer overflow. I like to pride myself on the fact that in the last 24 years, we have not had one. I like to say I'm doing my job when I don't have SSOs and I don't put stuff in people's basement. Well, Mother Nature made it very difficult for me to do my job this night. So Scott got additional people in. He mortared out two six inch pumps with hose down the Main Street Lift. We were waiting to hit a critical elevation because the minute we start those pumps and start an SSO, it starts a whole nother chain of events which involves Department of Natural Resources, Milwaukee Metropolitan Sewer District, every downstream water intake. And I have to contact every one of those entities within the first hour of starting that pump so that they know what's happening up here and how it's going to affect them downstream. So at five in the morning, I commenced an SSO at Main Street due to critical elevation being reached. We use two six inch pumps pumping at 1,200 gallons a minute. And the reason we started it at Main Street Lift and not at Old Farm Lift is because Main Street pumps to Old Farm. So the thought process is we take out the excess flow at Main Street where it's easier to get rid of because we're directly tributary to the Menominee River right there versus pumping into the Jefferson Ditch first before it hits the Menominee. We pumped at Main Street first. So between five and six a.m., I started the notification procedure per state statutes for sanitary sewer overflow. I notified the DNR Spills Hotline via direct communication with State Patrol Dispatch. DNR Basin Engineer Jacob Van Susterne-Wodeski was notified via voicemail and email. Washington County DNR Warden Stephen Schwartz was notified via voicemail. MMSD Greg Hoddinger was notified via email. Milwaukee Water Works was notified via email and voicemail. South Milwaukee Ben Hoffman was via text message. City of Cudahy Tim Burkle was via text message. Germantown Administration and Village Board was notified via email. And by this time, the initial rounds of rain had stopped. And my lead operator showed up at 5:45 a.m. due to his own flooding at his own home and not being able to get out of his neighborhood. This is 6:09 on August 10th. I'm fully staffed by 6:45 in the morning. Additional personnel begin to mobilize, set up remaining emergency pumping equipment at Old Farm Lift in anticipation of a second SSO. And a second round of intense thunderstorms begins around 7:50 in the morning and the storms continued until 11 o'clock with rain rates approaching 5.32 inches per hour. At 8:50, a second SSO was initiated at Old Farm Lift Station. At eight fifty, a second SSO was initiated at Old Farm Lift Station using three four inch pumps with a combined output of one thousand nine hundred fifty gallons per minute. And a second round of notifications was initiated. At this time, the raw pumps at Old Farm inside the lift station itself were pumping at eight thousand five hundred gallons a minute, which is maximum capacity. Um, at nine thirty in the morning, the river levels are quickly rising, uh, water is backing up onto Main Street. Um, public notification process initiated through Clark Otte and her staff with, on the website. Uh, Administrator Crecklow did push notifications on all village socials. Um, and the utility personnel deployed signage biohazard tape to warn the public at the location of the overflows. Um, utility operators continue to monitor pumps, uh, levels, river level and check down other lift stations until the SSO ceased. Five oh five in the morning, I'm sorry, five oh five in the evening, uh, the initial SSO at Main Street was terminated with a total discharge volume of one point seven two eight million gallons. Five thirty, one six inch pump from. Main Street was broke down and redirected to increase the bypass capacity at Old Farm Lift Station. By an additional twelve hundred gallons per minute, bringing total bypass to three thousand one hundred and fifty gallons per minute. Um, at this time, uh. I contacted Chad Ross at the Village of Jackson to see if his lab could do our samples, which were required to do sampling anytime there's an SSO. And he asked if there was any additional personnel that we needed at this time. And I said, no, and I thanked him. Um, and at this point, Main Street and Old Farm are still operating at maximum capacity. At six PM, I'm informed that the rising. River levels at lift six, the drain through the berm is closed, operator set initial two inch pump. Lift six and a three inch pump is added to Old Farm SSO, bringing total output to three thousand four hundred fifty gallons per minute. At eight PM, the second SSO terminated at Old Farm. Were total discharge volume of one point two four eight million gallons, pumps are broken down and mobilized to lift six. All this is still on Sunday. So at nine o'clock, focus turns to, uh, lift six and rotating operators out. Um, I rotated out Travis after fifteen and a half hours and I went home after being in here for twenty-one and a half hours at eleven forty-seven PM. On August 11th. We get this crazy. Rainstorm that popped up at quarter to six in the morning. And we get a rain rate of twenty-two and a half inches per hour. It's a forty-five minute peak right there from bottom to top, back to bottom with one point three inches of rain. So at four fifteen in the morning, I'm notified of imminent flood risk due to fast rising water in the area of Buffalo Wild Wings Starbucks. Decision is made to make a dike from dry compost and wood chips with the highway department. Graciously hauled out there for us and dumped that material and, um. We were able to reinforce it with the available sandbags we had here at the village, which wasn't a whole lot because when we moved from. Fond du Lac Avenue to the new, um. New site, a lot of that stuff wasn't brought along because it was just. It was deteriorated, it was bad, it was not even usable anymore. So we got rid of a lot of that stuff and. We never really kind of thought that, boy, we should make some sandbags because you don't really use them that often. At five fifteen, um. Rotated out Eric, Eric had been in for twenty-seven hours and fifteen minutes at this point. Um, six o'clock, we contacted Washington County for all available sandbags. Um, Washington County arrived with a hundred pre-made sandbags and three hundred empty bags, um. Seven thirty, the highway truck arrives with sand, three hundred sandbags deployed and I rotated out Brett at this point after working twenty-four hours and forty-five minutes straight. At this same time, um. Called John Elaine, said, John, I said, you think one of your engines could pump out of the storm sewer? He said. I don't see why not. I said, well, can you give me one down to County Line Road? I need, I need more capacity. So John brought down sixty-four, popped it into an inlet right on the corner of Rivers Bend and County Line, and he began pumping fifteen hundred gallons per minute. At this point I had all the, I had all of our pumps that Village of Germantown owns deployed on County Line Road. We have one three inch, two two inch, three, four inch and two six inch. And total pumping capacity at this point by eight thirty in the morning on Monday is six thousand four hundred fifty gallons per minute. At this time I got a hold of Lincoln Contractor Supply. And asked for all available sandbags, um, they had three hundred in Milwaukee, five hundred in Oshkosh. And they got those to us in short order and we began filling sandbags, um. At ten o'clock, we had three hundred sandbags onsite and we began to fill them on site and we had a, kind of like a bucket brigade, only it was a sandbag brigade. And the river continued to rise. At ten thirty in the morning, I placed an emergency order with Clearview Packaging in Milwaukee to get us a thousand sandbags out of Iowa. Pumping operations are still continuing. Um. This is just times of guys coming into work, um. Six fifteen Travis rotates out after working thirteen hours and thirty minutes. Keep in mind, he's on light duty. He had a shoulder reconstructed back in January. Um. So I was literally using every one of my guys I could, whether they were crippled or not, um. Eight o'clock at night, my three inch pump fails. Contacted Lincoln Contractor Supply, I said, I need a three inch pump and I need it yesterday. Uh, by nine o'clock, they had a new three inch pump onsite back pumping. And I said, please check inventories of all your fours and sixes and we'll talk in the morning. And then they delivered the five hundred bags from Oshkosh. And I rotated out at nine thirty that night after being in for seventeen hours and thirteen minutes. August 12th, I clocked in at five twenty-nine, um, five forty-five, we had a brief but very intense thunderstorm. It's that graph dropped one point three inches of rain in forty-five minutes threatening the dike with intense erosion. So it was all hands on deck once again to get harps and plastic on top of that bike to prevent it from eroding and dissolving, um. Compost is great, sucks up a lot of moisture, but it gets very fragile once it reaches that full saturation point. And at this point, the rain was hitting the top of it and it was causing it just to disintegrate. Um, we were able to save it. If we, uh, were, we were able to get it plastic and get sandbags on it to support it. Um. This is about the time the engine went down with the engine code and I contacted Lincoln, I said, bring me out every available six inch pump you got in Milwaukee area. Lincoln arrived with four six inch pumps, two of them were immediately deployed, two of them were kept for reserve. This was to offset what we lost with the engine leaving to get that check engine light checked. And they also dropped me a spare three inch pump at this point. At nine thirty, we decided, um, to raise the height of the berm with straw because the river was continuing to rise. We had not reached crust yet. Um, we deployed sixty bales of straw and we staked them in place and we reinforced with sandbags. Um. At nine fifty-five, County Line Corridor loses power. Now the generator's running at the lift station and we have no way to get in there to fuel it. Um, this was the same power outage that occurred in Rivers Bend Circle. At ten thirty, Lincoln arrived with two four inch pumps for spares. At this point, Monomie Falls delivered a six inch with hose for a spare, Washington County delivered multiple pumps for spares. And we started using the Fleet Farm parking lot as a staging area for all this extra equipment. Um. And emergency management resources and the river has yet to crest. Finally, at ten forty-seven, I dropped three dye tablets in the Monomie River and I noticed that flow was reversing and I said. Thank you for finally bringing an end to this thing. Um. I think at that point you were out there, President Soderbergh, and I showed you how that dye was swirling in a reverse direction and that's how you know you reached your crest. At eleven o'clock, sixty-four came back on. We left those other four, uh, six inch pumps in place. We were now pushing thirteen thousand gallons a minute across County Line. Um. By two seventeen in the afternoon on August 12th, the water was completely gone from Main Street. Having danced with this devil for thirty-one years, I know that it takes approximately twelve hours. From the time water goes down on Main Street. For it to be gone on County Line Road. So this kind of started the timeline in my head of when we were going to start to see the light at the end of the puddle. So at seven eighteen, I finally went home after being in for thirteen hours and nineteen minutes. Um, I was back in at five thirty. At seven o'clock, uh, Battalion Chief. It was right here. Notified me that sixty-four was starting to suck air where they were, where they were drafting. So we repositioned sixty-four directly in front of the lift station where there's a manhole that outfalls directly to the river. We were able to get them a good twelve foot draft on that manhole. They continued their pumping operations. We then turned with the pumps that read that location into where they were pumping from. And at this point, the goal was set to pump until Rivers Bend was fully accessible to the residents, um. There was three areas on Rivers Bend Circle West that still held pretty considerable amounts of water at this point. I was monitoring. The water levels in that subdivision every hour. Um. August fourteenth, the goals today, um. For all the water to be gone from Rivers Bend, it was currently at ninety percent gone. We had two small. I would say they were about forty foot diameter areas where the water was still flooded all the way to the center of the line of the road to both, uh, curbs. Um, and the other goal was to release seventeen sixty-four as soon as feasible and stop all pumping. So at nine fifteen in the morning, we released sixty-four and the roads in Rivers Bend, uh, were passable. Uh, I then called Administrator Crecklow and I asked, I said, Steve, I said. Um, these businesses would really like to open as soon as possible. Is it okay if we keep pumping? Till six PM to try and de-water these parking lots as best we could and make it safe for the people coming. To utilize those businesses as well as to kind of give them a shot in the arm with their own cleanup that they were facing. And he said, yes, so that was the plan. And then we met with Washington County, uh, Scott. And I and, uh, people from Washington County, we met because normally they don't work on Fridays because it worked four tenths. We had to get a road open. So we came up with a game plan. We were going to meet at five AM, it's Friday morning and. First thing that was going to happen is we had to remove all of our equipment from County Line Roads was all the hoses, all the pumps. Um, some of that work actually started the night before we started. Uh, as the gasoline powered engines or pumps were running out of gas, we weren't refueling them. Cause we don't like to store them with gas in them, um. So we just slowly started phasing out the smaller pumps until all that was left running were the fours. And at six PM. Thursday night, we shut down all the four inch pumps and it worked. So we ceased at six PM, um. We blocked off all access to County Line Road with caution date at this point. And secured all of our equipment because we left a lot of it onsite. Um. We know we were going to be right back in a few short hours to get cleanup done. So at five thirty, we were all clocked in down on County Line Road. We broke down all of our hoses, highway department began sweeping the road. And clean up around Buffalo Wild Wings and Starbucks, we removed all traffic control. Lincoln Contractor Supply showed up and removed all the rental pumps. And at seven twenty-four, County Line Road was reopened to traffic and our goal was to have it open by noon. So here's an example of the hours that my staff put in, I don't know. I know Scott has one of his guys that was working pretty close with my guys who he has similar hours, but these are the guys that put in the time. And so big hit, big shout out to Brett Woodkey at a hundred and four and a half hours. Eric Kleis worked ninety-one and a half, I worked ninety-six hours and nine minutes. Oh, down sixty-two hours and seventy-five minutes and Travis Proton at sixty-four point five. So the people that supported directly my operation that I'd like to give a little shout out to that haven't been mentioned before is Lincoln Contractor Supply for pumps and hoses. Um, not only did they get them out here when we had stuff fail, they brought us new equipment to get up and running again. Washington County Emergency Management coordinated through Pat Merton. Where pumps and hoses from agencies as far away as Oshkosh, um, Dodge County. Village of Monomie Falls, uh, for pumps and hoses and offer personnel if needed, Village of Jackson Laboratory Analysis, the samples of personnel if needed. Village Craft and Pumps if needed. Dodge County Highway Department Pumps if needed. Jay Miller Electric, uh, came out and installed a external receptacle at lift six so I could run pumps over the past weekend. Without having to have the door open and running an extension cord from the inside out. Uh, Washington County Highway Department for road closure on Highway Q. Uh, GFD Engine seventeen sixty-four and all the personnel that rotated in and out of the, uh, pumping. Station on that truck for the entire five days we were out there. Uh, Germantown Police Department for closure enforcement and emergency management coordination. WISN twelve for awesome video footage and actual accurate reporting. Um, Clearview Packaging for sandbags. Here's a little food for thought, one inch of water on one acre landing is approximately twenty-five thousand gallons of water. Or the rough equivalent of five semi tanker trucks. Germantown is approximately twenty-three thousand forty acres in size. Our storm total was ten point five inches of rain totaling six billion ninety-four million eighty thousand gallons of water. That equals twelve million one hundred eighty-eight, one hundred and sixty semi tanker trucks of water. That was on Germantown on the tenth of August. Big number and all that water had to come through that bridge on County Line Road. Any questions? Do you want? Hold to the bird just to you back. Um. You gotta remember when that pump station was built in nineteen seventy-four, looked a little different down on County Line. It was a two lane road. Lot of agricultural was still happening there. Rivers Bend was the first, you know. Modern development down on County Line. Um, it's since has grown to a, the roadway that you have now, you've added a lot of. Impervious surface, you've added businesses that are at a higher elevation than lift station. Um. The, where the lift station is, is truly the low point of the collection system. So you got collector sewers that extend to the freeway to the east. And you got collector sewers that go all the way out to, you know, Grace Churches over by Walmart. All that sewer comes to lift six. It's the natural open. And from there we pump it back across the freeway. It comes into Old Farm though.
Tracy Warren?
So I showed up Saturday morning or Sunday morning. And I offered to, uh, help you load sandbags, but you said you didn't want to compromise your efforts. I'm not sure what you were. But, um. When we were there, I, I mentioned this to you and said, you guys are really part of the silent service. Nobody really knows what you do until times like this. And I've been in a few sanitary sewers in my time and I have to admit, it's really not the most glamorous job that you can have. In a public works department, but thank God there's people like you. Willing to do that work and have the passion to really step it up. To protect this village the way you did. It's just commendable which, which you guys did. So it. It's beyond a job. It's, it's, it's community, i- it's a passion. And I, I hope at some point here, the board recognizes the efforts. Of all the various departments and also the donors and sponsors somehow. To recognize that we really appreciated that and we couldn't have done any of this without their help. Thank you, Tim.
Yeah, I was, uh, first time to a lift station was Sunday morning. Never been in one and, um, hopefully over the last, over the course of four or five days, I wasn't too much of a nuisance to your team. Uh, but, um, I've never seen so much dedication. I mean, I would pop in, I would go home, pop in again and you see the same people. And you go up to them and say, what do you need? Do you need some food? Do you need water? I'm fine. Everything's fine. Um, and they had a smile on their face. And they're still working and it's phenomenal. Uh, I've never learned so much about water and, and poop or sewage that I've ever wanted to know, but, uh, you guys are awesome. You guys are rock stars. Um. Yeah, I think you saved the day for Germantown. And you were always there, my gosh. So hats off to you and your team.
Bob, I think you should, that day you shouldn't ask them if they need more water.
Point taken. Any other questions?
I, I, I just had a, a, a little, uh, shout out, uh, because, um. Rivers Bend is in District Four and, um. Near and dear to my heart and, um, we're so glad you were able to rescue people and, um, help them out as homeowners. And I think, um, if you think about it, Tim, you're on the big level. Of all this water and there were many residents like myself. That were battling our own little rivers in our basements and stuff and helping other neighbors. So. that were battling our own little rivers in our basements and stuff and helping other neighbors. So it was truly a concerted effort, but thank you for you and your team and all those donors and the all the support from all the different villages and municipalities. It's great. Thank you so much.
Any further comments for Tim? Thank you very much, sir.
All right, we have a a couple more things to to go through here. First of all, wanted to provide some information on the damage assessment and reporting process and you know, one of the reasons and not the only reason, not the most important reason, but one of the reasons you issued a declaration of emergency management is to start the process to get potential funding from FEMA or other organizations. So we've been working cooperatively with Washington County Emergency Management and Wisconsin Emergency Management. We've had meetings with them and ongoing email communications. We're working to provide estimates of both public and private property damage for use for a FEMA funding request. The village engineer has been leading the review of damage of public property and estimating repair and replacement cost. One of the things that we did early on in the process. And I don't recall anymore if it was Monday or Tuesday. We set up an emergency call line with the clerk's office taking the lead to field calls from residents who wanted to report damage. The county later on added a two one one line where residents could call and and provide their information. And then we've had staff from building inspection slash Safe Built have been taking the lead on going out and getting an eye on the damage and then entering that information into a FEMA database where it's been collected. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute here. So actually, the the estimates for damage due to public property are due at noon on Tuesday. So that's been something staff has been working diligently on. Data on the number of homes, homes damaged and the level of damage is almost due at noon on Tuesday. This slide is a little bit out of date. The the local impact statement was due on Wednesday, but I received an email this afternoon. That is due tomorrow morning at nine o'clock. So we've been working on that and we will have that ready to go and to the county in time. FEMA, again, this is things are, this is how quickly things are moving. FEMA may conduct additional future inspections. I've been informed they may be here on Thursday and Friday of this week doing that. So we'll be, we're setting up tours for them to be able to visit the the damage. I also did want to say though that the process for receiving FEMA funds may take months. So right now we're going through a very fast process of getting all the data together. They want that as soon as possible after the end of the event so that the data is fresh. But you know, sometimes it's hurry up and wait a while. And that's often the case with FEMA funding requests and it does take some time to work its way through the process. So here's where we were with damage of estimates of public property at about one o'clock today. And these are categories that the federal government sets up. Estimated cost of debris removal at this point looks like a little over twenty-five thousand dollars. Emergency protective measures at about fifty-three thousand dollars. Roads and bridges, about a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. Water control, which includes some of the things we've heard about down at County Line Road. Was it forty-seven thousand dollars? Buildings and equipments, almost a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Utilities eighteen thousand five hundred and parks and rec eight thousand two hundred for a total of four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. And that number is probably likely to increase somewhat as we get further along. You know, they they want information reported immediately, but there is room to add to it, amend it as we get better cost information. And the potential we identify identify more problems. So another item that's can be challenging to get a good estimate on is damaged private property. So we fielded a total of five hundred and fifty-one calls as of eight o'clock this morning. The majority of those calls were were answered by village staff. There were some and I don't have an exact number right now that were that did go through two one one. But even after we announced the two one one information, one of the one of the things we heard from from residents who were calling in was a difficulty getting through to two one one. That was all the same number being used by Milwaukee and Waukesha Counties. And it was a long phone tree. So many of our residents decided to call Village Hall and we were able to take those calls. Now Safe Built and and then Village Staff worked this weekend going out and catching up with those damage assessments. They completed six hundred and thirty-four damage assessments, which is more than the number of calls we got, obviously. And the reason for that is if they were out in a neighborhood and they they were checking addresses and they saw that the house next door also had materials out that indicated flood damage, they also recorded that in the FEMA database. So they were able to identify, there were fortunately, there were no homes destroyed, at least that we're aware of in Germantown. And that's not the case in the area. There were homes, homes destroyed in Waukesha and Milwaukee County. I believe West Bend also had some some homes destroyed as well. So we were fortunate here in Germantown. That's not the case. There were twenty-eight homes with major damage and kind of the the cutoff line for major damage was when water got to the point where it was affecting mechanicals within the house. A furnace, a water heater, washer and dryer. If it got, the water got to that level and they were able to tell that by kind of looking at what was outside generally or from the descriptions that were provided when people called in. Those count, homes were categorized as as major damage. Two hundred and eighty-five homes with minor damage, which I believe was three to six inches of water in the basement. Two hundred and thirty-one that were affected by the flood, which means some level of water in the basement. Ninety homes were inaccessible at the time we were doing the survey, which was my, and most of those were the Rivers Bend area. So and as I mentioned, FEMA is apparently scheduling time to come in and and do their own onsite review. Before I I move on from that, just any questions about that that process of estimating damage and looking at both public and private property? And then the final thing, well, almost final thing I want to touch base on is an issue that came up Friday afternoon related to the village water, water supply. When the well came up and we had some initial planning meetings on Monday. When the when the storm came through and we had initial planning meetings with T P W on Monday. The water utility stepped up and increased the testing of raw water to because this was a potential to monitor for potential contamination. On Friday, test results came by showing that there was coliform at wells two and five and E. coli at well seven. And just for background, and I'm not a microbiologist. But coliform is is common and generally harmless bacteria. It's tested as kind of a, just a general indicator of the overall water quality, but it it is generally considered to be relatively harmless. On the other hand, E. coli, which which is a type of coliform can cause serious illness. So that was the real red flag that came up on Friday afternoon. Now, the other important thing is that we were also testing water. They're referred to as distribution samples that after it went through the village treatment systems at the pumps. That's water that's distributed to residents and there is no contamination found in that water. So that water was always safe for village residents to drink and utilize for for household purposes. The D N R recommended a series of action steps that we took to ensure the safety of our water. First of all, the water utility shut down well seven so that no no raw water from well seven has been entering the village water supply since that test came back as positive. Then they increased the amount of chlorine being used for treatment to make sure that, you know, if there were any bacterias that they were more likely to be the chlorine kills the bacteria and it makes the water safe. Then they began Friday afternoon and evening flushing out hydrants in the area to try to pull more of that chlorine into the system and again, make sure the water supply was safe. We informed residents of the positive tests at the time, recommended that people test their private well water or or were boiled before consuming the water. We did additional sampling over the weekend and there were no additional positives for E. coli. So we're going to continue to monitor that, but and and there will be other action steps that we'll take before bringing well seven online, but at this point, no additional positives for E. coli. So some of the next steps, we're going to continue testing the raw water. We're going to analyze potential sources of contamination and develop a remediation plan for well seven. And one of the things that kind of came up over the weekend as I was getting messages from residents via the via Facebook and and an email regarding testing and you know, there was one of them stuck out to me was a someone who sounded like potentially an elderly resident. A woman who asked, where do you go to get your water, well water tested? And and I gave her some information, but maybe the larger point is, you know, as for private wells, people really should be testing their wells on a regular basis and you know, as as new people move into the village and maybe move into areas and they're not as familiar with private well maintenance. We probably would be helpful if the village could provide some information about, you know, maintaining your private well and making sure that that water is safe to drink and not only these circumstances, but but in any circumstances. So I guess I'll pause again there before moving on to the last couple of slides.
Steve, any idea how long does it take for an aquifer to be flushed clear of E. coli and all these contaminants?
You know, I don't, I don't know the answers to that question. It's one of the things. We did reach out, if you recall, we've, we have a, an aquifer expert who has come and presented to Public Works and Highway Committee Meetings and Village Board Meetings in the past. We did share this information with him. He's going to be instrumental in kind of recommending like what we need to do before we bring well seven online. That's one of the key questions is how long does it take to for that that all to be flushed out?
Could you remind us where well seven is?
Well, seven, actually, well, five and well, seven are right next to each other, basically on the corner of Western and McQuan Road.
Yeah, this is another of those phone calls where you don't want to get from your village administrator. Where he calls you up and not only he was on the phone, but our village attorney was on the phone. He said, Bob, I got bad news. And he shared what was going on and I I do want to say a great job in terms of the crisis communications to the community. I received nothing but positive comments on how transparent those communications were. So excellent job. Thank you.
So the, I think this is the last slide. Just additional thank yous and and you know, late last week, I asked some of the staff to submit some slides for the presentation tonight and and or and some of, sometimes it's just like information and and Brenton kind of pulled it into slides. But one of the things that stuck out to me is every single one of the departments had this long list of thank yous to put in place and you know, number one, I appreciate that about our, our, our department staff that in the midst of these extremely long work hours and everything that they're, that they're doing, that they remember to say thank you. And I think that says a lot about their character and I appreciate that. But more so, it's just been the, the outreach from the community has been incredible and I I know that as many, as many organizations and people and businesses that were listed, there are some that that we forgot to list and and still I got one this afternoon from a, from a business that wants to, you know, bring in lunch for the folks who responded to this. So that's been incredible and and just, you know, kind of a blanket thank you to everybody who, who, who helped out in one way or another. You know, another thing that I would say is a thank you to the residents of Germantown. They've been patient. You know, and it's hard to be patient when you're, when you're frustrated, when you're dealing with adversity. When you've got, you know, water backed up in your basement and and problems with your house, it's hard to be patient and and our residents have been patient and we appreciate that and cooperating with us as we try to provide services. And then just assisting their neighbors. You know, I've just heard numerous anecdotes of people who have, you know, see an elderly neighbor or somebody who's struggling to to clean out their basement and helping them out. And that's just shows the kind of community that Germantown is. You know, the, the village employees, I just echo what so many have said here tonight. Helping out in in any way possible and some for many, many hours. You know, but also I don't want to forget about those who just, who maybe because of their roles just did something small and example of that, it was in the video at the beginning of the meeting. You know, our, our accounts payable clerk, Jennifer. Just on her own volition, because she wanted to help out in some way, went down to the D P W building one day last week and just went into all the offices and grabbed invoices that need to be processed and set up in the conference room and processed all the invoices. So that the staff who are working all these long hours didn't have to worry about that. Just there was the one thing that she could do, but she did it to take it off their plate. And then I don't want to forget about our, our government partners. You know, we mentioned Germantown School District, you know, just stepping in and from other front, offering anything that that we needed. And then Washington County Emergency Management and and their communication and help has been great as well. And I'd also like to thank President Soderberg for your communication during all of this too. And I think you know, the village Facebook and website was one thing. I think it was also very helpful with you being out and the videos and things that you shared were helpful in communicating to the residents as well. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, again, I've, I've been doing this for forty years. I've, in my other full-time job, I'm a safety, security, crisis management business resilience person. And I was with companies in over a hundred and eighty countries worldwide. And you see bad things happen every day and we experienced that this past week in Germantown. And I just have to say that I would not have done anything different in terms of the response and the recovery efforts and I'm very proud of that. I know the community is very proud of that. I do want to read a post that was on a Facebook page and I went to this person and talked to him the day that he posted this from Stout Farm. Not quite sure exactly what to say. We all suffered losses and devastation last night unlike what most of us have ever seen. Basements, cars, houses, belongings. My loss was five hundred birds that drowned in the floodwaters, some turkeys, some laying hens, some roasting chickens. The floodwaters have receded about halfway tonight, but still not enough to start cleaning up. I'm not sure yet how to even go about that. Purs for all in gratitude for the God given resilient human spirit and the grace that binds us. And I think this just, in my mind, reaffirms of who we are in Germantown. Not only from a, on the government services side, but in the community. Because you did see neighbors helping neighbors, knocking on doors, delivering food. I didn't even know that the community was delivering food for our, our team. It was phenomenal what was happening in our community. I hope it never happens again. But to Tim's point, this was a thousand year flood. But you know, we're going to be better tomorrow because of what happened this past week. And I think everybody did a great job. Your team did a great job. And to trustee Bob Warren, we will be recognizing people, I believe, in a couple of board meetings. We have that planned. So we're going to make a big deal about that. So. But again, I applaud you. Everyone did a great job. Our community did a great job and that's who we are. So further comments. Okay, thank you very much. And how about a round of applause? We are now on to item C, possible resolution related to building permit fees for flooding damage.
So I'll introduce this and the village attorney and the community development director can help out. Soon people are going to be coming, are going to be starting to reconstruct their basements. Make redo improvements to their home and they'll be coming in for building permits. One of the things that we did see that last week actually was West Bend waived their. Building permits for flood damaged homes. So we did prepare a draft resolution for the board's consideration. And this would mimic that where basically. We would waive, the village would waive, we would waive our portion of the fees. We are structured a little bit differently in that we have Safe Built to. We receive fifty percent of the of the permit fee. Safe Built receives fifty percent to compensate them for the, the work that their staff does. This would waive the village's portion of those permit fees. And it would be conditional upon the items that you see listed in the resolution. And for those listening, I'll just mention. That the property owner reported their storm damage either through the two-on-one system or through the village clerk's office. Storm damage reported by August twenty-ninth. And permit fees will be waived only for work which was. Which was previously permitted. And permit applications have to be submitted before March first, twenty twenty-six. We leave a pretty extensive window in case people aren't able to get out to work right away.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'm of approval of the resolution waiving certain permit fees in response to the state of emergency declared. In response to the August ninth through tenth, twenty twenty-five rain event.
Second.
Who seconded that? Thank you, trustee Warren. Discussion. I think this is wonderful. We don't know, we don't know. If the homeowner had insurance, if they had flood insurance, if they had sewage backup insurance. Whether or not FEMA will come through, that'll be months down the road. But I think every bit will help our residents. I think this goes a long way. So. Further comment discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Real call, real call. Sure. Real call. Thank you.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
Trustee Cutts.
Aye.
Trustee Jay Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Boards.
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky. Trustee Peeper.
Aye.
Village President Soderbergh.
Aye. That motion carries. We are done. Any further comments before we call this quits tonight? All right, I'm calling the meeting order off at nine twenty-three. Thank you for coming and drive home safe. Good job.